Not this time.
Okay.
Yeah.
Oh, I see.
Mm-hmm.
So just the last one.
Yep.
Okay.
That could be next time. All right. We are almost ready.
So City Council, regular meeting, we're in Mon County Commission Chambers, 243 High Street. It's Tuesday, February 6th, 2024, and it's 20 minutes after seven. We're calling the meeting to order and asking the clerk if she please call the rule.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Present.
Bill Kowecki?
Here.
Wheezy Michael?
Here.
Danielle Trumbull?
Here.
Dave Harshberger?
Here.
Brian Butcher? Mayor Celine?
Here.
You all stand for the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, we move on to approval of the minutes. We have minutes from January 16th, 2024, special meeting minutes, January 16th, 2024, regular meeting minutes, January 30th, 2024, special meeting minutes, and January 30th, 2024, Committee of the Whole meeting minutes. Any additions or corrections? We're all in agreement?
Yep.
All right. We are moving through correspondence. Is there any correspondence that anyone wants to bring up? If no, we're moving to an ordinance authorizing and regulating private outdoor designated areas in the city of Morgantown. So we are going to open this public hearing. This is a public hearing just on this topic. So if there's anyone wishing to speak just on this, outdoor designated areas in the city of Morgantown, an ordinance authorizing and regulating private outdoor designated areas in the city of Morgantown, they can come forward and speak.
Mayor, councilors, it's an honor to be here and speak to you. My name is Samuel Workman. I'm a resident of South Park, citizen of Morgantown. I'm here to speak on behalf and in support of POTA. In my daily life, I do a lot of work on economic development, community development, not only in West Virginia, but the broader Appalachian region. And we can talk a lot about sort of the economic development benefits of a POTA, jobs, revenue for local governments, business activity. But there's also the larger setting in which this occurs that sometimes I think when communities that they know each other well, they don't, they don't see the bigger picture as well. And this is a, a policy that is very much in line with greater economic transitions in the Appalachian region. Whether we do this or not, Ohio will, has, Kentucky has, North Carolina has, West Virginia has, will. And so this is part of a slate of policies that is about really at the base of it, the emergence, birth, growth of a recreational economy in the state of West Virginia. And so more largely, West Virginia is becoming something it has not been in the past. And Morgantown can take its place in, in sort of that broader effort of things. There's no less than 10 bills on, on the agenda in the state legislature right now, all of which are liberalizing the production, distribution, and sale of beverages. And so when we think about Morgantown as sort of the gateway of the north, it is the entryway to the Monongahela National Forest, to our lakes in the center of the state, and of course, to wonderful rafting in my motherland, in the southern part of the state. And so our neighbors, our sister municipalities will be looking to us to set the tone, especially in this part of the state, for what slates of policies promote the recreational economy, situate West Virginia municipalities within that larger context, and take full advantage of people who very much want to come to our beautiful state and spend money here. And so what we do will be meaningful for Thomas Davis, all the way to Fayetteville, Buckley, and beyond. And so I strongly encourage you to support this for the very real tangible benefits, but also for setting the tone for the transition of the state to what is beyond coal and the next, and the next sort of thing, and to situate us in lockstep with our cousins across the Appalachian region who are very much taking the same tack to similar issues. I'll leave you with that.
Thank you. I assume there may be others wishing to speak. Are there others wishing to speak?
Good evening. I'm Jessica McDonald. I'm on the Main Street Morgantown Board and also the Board of the MAC, and I recently took a position with Round Table Development, which owns a lot of buildings in downtown Morgantown, including the Warner, the Apothecary. And so I'm just here to speak from more of a local perspective on how valuable I think this can be to our city. I'm seeing more collaboration than I have ever seen in the years that I have been here between the arts organizations, between Main Street Morgantown. Recently, we started First Fridays. The first one was last week. There was a lot of appetite in all the public meetings that I have been involved in recently for that particular event, which is a national sort of brand. And I think adding the ability to have a drink and walk around with it in a very responsible way, you know, all very, very carefully done, I think will really appeal to people in the community. And I am, I'm just excited for this time in Morgantown. I think that so many things are happening, so many people are pulling together, and this is really an important part of, of adding to that spirit and making Morgantown a place to come to, and specifically an arts destination. So thank you for considering.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If everybody, when you come up, be sure you give your name and your address.
All right.
It helps the clerks.
My name is William Rittenhour. I live at 235 South Walnut. I also have a business at 444 Brockway Avenue, which is Chestnut Brew Works, our local beer brewer here in town. And I'm getting ready to open another location at 132 Pleasant Street, which is the old Blackberry location. I have dedicated a lot of time, money, and resources into this business and to growing the business, and not only for me, but for my employees and, and future employees we plan on hiring. I do have three children. My son goes to Morgantown High. My other son goes to South. My daughter goes to Brookhaven. I'm a member of this community, and I'm, I'm following up on what Jessica said. I've been able to, the, the, the building or the business we're getting ready to open at, at the old Blackberry location, which really needed something, by the way. I'm really just lucky that I got to be a part of that. And it, it is part of this movement of collaboration and people that are really trying to do something better for Morgantown. We are now competing with town centers, University Town Center, Suncrest Town Center. This town, if we want to increase like the economic feasibility of this town and, and really, you know, kind of get people down here, we're, we're going to need to draw them here. I also am from a family that suffers from alcoholism. I've witnessed alcoholism, and it's not pretty. Are there going to be, be people who try to abuse us? Probably. There probably will be. Let's just be honest. Okay? But I, I don't believe that we should like let fear control like the decisions that we make when there can be a lot of good that can come from this, for my business, for the businesses of my friends, and for tax revenue for the city. So while it might have some problems, and while there are going to be people that might, you know, whatever, I think in all, in, in the general sense, that this is really good for the city, it's a good opportunity for us to attract people here. And it's a good opportunity for us to like really show like what us as a town can like really offer people, why we should be a destination, why people shouldn't mind paying for parking, because they get to come here and do cool stuff. Maybe a little bitch less about parking. I'm sorry, excuse my language. But anyway, I've, I've taken up my time. I appreciate you all listening. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Scott Frederick, a 34-year resident of Morgantown. I live in First Ward on Wayne Avenue. I started as a photography studio down at the bottom of High Street. And that's when Morgantown was very vibrant in the 90s. And I've watched it slowly decline, and a lot of empty storefronts and a lot of things. And I washed my hands of downtown. And then a couple of years ago, I got into a project with Mark Downs, and we revitalized the Apothecary, the building that's now Apothecary. And seeing what vibrancy that that outdoor patio brought to Morgantown, that's kind of like a ground swell, and I think we should continue that, but make it a little more open and a little more inclusive and inviting. And so I think that coupled with, I've also been lucky enough to work on the, the new Chestnut Brew Works Beer Hall down on Pleasant Street. So I've been, you know, in the trenches as far as making these places available. And I think the more that we can roll out the red carpet to people that are, you know, coming downtown, and we need to attract more people to come downtown. And if they're enjoying a beverage at one place, and they're out, and they get to walk around, and then they might see something, a storefront or a potential storefront even, that they might not have noticed. So I think the more people we bring downtown, filling up the, you know, the venues and spending money and making it a more vibrant place, we can bring Morgantown back to the place that I fell in love with. I came here in 1990, and I visited a friend, and I went to a party, and I never left. So I, I think that we, we, we need to bring the vibrance back that it was back in the 90s. And with, with all the stakeholders that we have, I think that it's, this is one thing that I think will actually help to, to further that cause. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Tara St. Clair, 2316 Suncrest Village, Morgantown, West Virginia. I'm the Director for the NCOVA Center for Innovation and Entrepreneurship. I'm also a small business owner in town, and I'm on the Board of the MAC with Jessica. And I just moved back to Morgantown a couple of years ago. I was living in Charlotte, North Carolina, right? Like everybody goes down 77 and stays. And I came back to Morgantown because I saw so much opportunity. In the state of West Virginia, 98% of business is small. We have to do a better job of supporting small business, and I think that this ordinance is a great opportunity to do that. I am working really hard to bring my friends back home. So I hope that you support this ordinance, because I think that this is a big part of bringing people back and making this a fun, young town. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, it's the first time I've been in this, this room, and you guys look fantastic. In respect to this, my name's LJ Giuliani. I've been a lifelong resident of the community. I'm not a citizen of Morgantown. I live across the river, but all of my business dealings and my wife Lisa's business dealings, most of them are in, in downtown, near around downtown. So downtown, as many of you already know, is a pretty special place for myself and my wife, my children. And we work, we work our butts off to figure out ways of making our, our downtown stand out, to be a destination. Ordinances like these, which I have to credit our, our counsel and, and Counselor Trumbull, Trumbull and Delegate Williams, that they initiated this. They're the ones that brought this forth down to, to the state. And Charleston has, has done this, as you know. And, and Huntington has done this, as you know. The messaging that, that I'm hearing is this is exciting. This is an opportunity for us to set ourselves apart. You know, we've got to figure out ways of how we, 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 we build a downtown, which I think, which is, which I often refer to as the original town center. So we have a tool right here that sets us apart from, from the town centers, that, that, that will designate us as a, as a destination of where you come down. I think of events like, with, I think of events like a West Virginia birthday party. A few years back, there was question of whether we should introduce alcohol into the, into the, to the West Virginia birthday party downtown. There were skeptics, but then we found out, once we did it, wow, what, what, what a, what a great event that was, what a great opportunity. You saw kids down here, you saw adults down here. People were able to behave themselves. So I, I get it. We, sometimes we get a little, a little worried when, when alcohol comes in. But this next generation that's coming up, and, and make no mistake, the, the people that we are, we're trying to highlight our community to are the next generation coming up, the folks that are going, are thinking, where do I want to move? Where do I want to live? Where do I want to set up, set up a business? Where do I want to visit? Morgantown has so much to offer. As my wife would say, we're swimming in potential. And we're drowning in potential, I should say. And, and this is, this is one of those opportunities where often I'll ask, I'll, I'll ask, I've asked you in the past, it's like where, when, when we take, when do we take advantage of opportunities to lead? And, and as opposed to reacting, we're being proactive. Well, this is, this is an opportunity for us to be proactive and create a mechanism where it's not just attracting patrons to our downtown, it's also sending a, sending a signal out there to potential businesses that's saying, wait a minute. Things are, things are looking a little bit different in Morgantown. There's opportunity there. Not everyone wants to set up shop in a town center, a contrived town center. Some people want, want the brick and mortar of, of a downtown. That's where the cultural is. And, and conveniently enough, where we're situated in downtown Morgantown, we're connected to recreational elements. Someone, well, let's just look at it this way. We've created these nice dynamics on Friday night, Friday night concerts at, at the amphitheater. Well, now people come for some of those attractions. Well, now, when they come here, let's create other opportunities for them to stick around for a couple of days in Morgantown and go to a restaurant, and then mill around downtown, check out the shops. Maybe they'll get on their, get, get on their, their bike and go for a ride. And after they're done with their bike, they'll go to the Apothecary, or they'll go, go to the Iron Horse Tavern, or they'll go see a show. These are the things we need to make our downtown. This is, this is us rewriting the script of who we are as a downtown. I'd say we'd be, if, if we don't move forward with this, I, I really, I don't have a whole lot of faith, I have a lot of faith with other decision-making that we'll have. So I'm, I'm hoping that, 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 that all of the people speaking here tonight, it's impressing, impressing upon you that this is, this is a wonderful opportunity. And it's not, it's not one to, to take lightly. You've done, you've done your due diligence. The, 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 the way the verbiage is in, in the ordinance is, you've been very proactive as far as putting in guardrails for this. This is not directed to the, to your stereotypical college students. The parameters are such that this is directed more to, to an older clientele. So be proud of all the work that's been done to get to this point. And, and I, I'm, I'm just... And I'm just, I'd be happy to, you pull the trigger and say, yes, this is the direction we want to go in. And I think we're all, we're going to be happy with the returns, because this is going to feed other opportunities as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's Stephen Wilson. I'm from Morgantown, West Virginia. I own the Art Bar right across the street. I've been here my whole life. Everything, everyone that's spoken so far has had pieces that resonate with me, and it's, yeah, I would definitely say there's aspects that are true, like the decline of downtown throughout the late 90s, early 2000s, all the vacant spaces and things like that was kind of a sad change to see. So I know since I've started working across the street just in the last couple of years, I've got to meet and get to know a lot of the people that are, you know, putting a lot of effort into trying to create something that's like worth coming downtown to visit. And really, I agree that this, I think, is just a little boost to give people an extra incentive. So I think if other places are doing it, and having success with it, and you know, even expanding their, you know, expanding the parameters of how the system works, I think that's going to be something that we should definitely encourage us to do. So keep that in mind.
Good evening, Council. My name's Jamie Summerlin, 209 Kingwood, proud resident of Greenmont, and definitely a proud West Virginian. I just made some notes here as they were speaking, so I just want to make some comments on that. I'm a CEO, the CEO of Guidon Creative, an event management company here in Morgantown. And we bring a lot of people to events that come into our area. Just held a New Year's Eve event, over half the attendees were from out of state and stayed in our hotels, filled up a couple of hotels, as a matter of fact, when they were here. I enjoy bringing people here and providing opportunities for them to experience Morgantown and West Virginia, because we've got great people and we've got great assets to really showcase. I've heard a lot of people speak tonight about the opportunity POTA brings to us. Are there challenges? Yes, there always are. But that's why you have ordinances in place. That's why you have existing regulations that are already on the books. What we have had or not had, however, has been an even playing field. I fought the past few years to get legislation passed at the state level concerning ABCA regulations that hamstrung us and prevented us from being able to do some of the things that we can currently do. And they speak to some of the issues that POTA is actually trying to address. My argument was that we didn't have, we weren't leaving money on the table. The problem was the money never even made it to the table. We weren't given an even playing field for other states around us that could do these events and have these opportunities that we as West Virginians weren't allowed to do. There were so many restrictions at these festivals that we were trying to start up, and ones that even existed, it was kind of mind-boggling to see how some of them were even surviving. There were sample restrictions, there were sales restrictions, pouring restrictions. SB 534 changed that greatly. And the upcoming Chocolate Wine &amp; Shine Festival on February 17th, tickets are still available, Milan Park, by the way. That is going to be a great opportunity to showcase some of the great things that we're doing here in the state. I've got wineries, I've got distilleries from all over West Virginia coming to promote the good things that they're doing, and to promote their hard work and an opportunity to showcase some of the good stuff that we have here in West Virginia. But what they can now do are things that they couldn't do even last year because of the legislations that passed. They're now also able to pour the samples themselves, which sounds kind of crazy, but we've always had to have volunteers be able to do this stuff. They can actually sell product at the event now for off-premise consumption, which they could never do before. All the other states around us have been able to do that. Now we're providing opportunities for our cities to engage in events and things that give us an opportunity to really showcase our cities. For example, and I shared this with the Council recently, the Christmas Light Display on Holly Jolly Brawley was not just a Thursday through Sunday night display. And from a snippet that was on WOWK's website, it was a seven-day-a-week event where they said, "City officials say that," and I'm quoting, "At this time, only the City Center Capital City Sip and Stroll POTA will be active. The hours for the sip and stroll POTA will be Monday through Friday from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m.," so every weekday, "and Saturday through Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. Families and friends of all ages took advantage of the full week to visit the display, and we were all excited to see that happen." I would love to see this POTA go into existence and not apply restrictions that require us to have to step through even more hoops to make something like that happen. I've heard arguments in the past about why we should allow events like these and things like this to happen. LJ spoke to it. We were at the same meeting where we had an official that was concerned about kids and alcohol being in the same place. This past year, we held the West Virginia Birthday Party, and there were kids riding the little mini carts around down here on High Street, around some of the breweries that were set up where their parents were having a good time. That official was actually there to cut the cake and had an absolute blast, and said it was an awesome event that he was happy to attend. So we were excited to see those things come to fruition and see that people can actually do it and behave themselves. Our elected officials are here to legislate and regulate that allows for opportunities to flourish. Our elected officials are not elected to legislate morality. Law enforcement and existing regulations are in place to ensure people are safe and have a good time. I'm fully in support of POTA passing, and as expressed to the Council through my email a couple of weeks ago, seeing the seven days go into effect as was expressed at that time. I want us to lead. I want Morgantown to shine. Other cities are taking the lead on some of these things. I think we have a unique opportunity to do something special here, and I want us to take the lead and create our own opportunities, not just follow what other cities are doing. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Council. My name is John Trumbull, 1141 Charles Avenue. I'm here to speak in favor of the POTA ordinance. As you know, POTA is the culmination of over two years of work. Counselor Trumbull, city staff, and our state legislators put in to make this happen. Legislators like Delegate John Williams, who, for anyone who doesn't know, is sober. Yet he's still fought for this, for us. After passing POTA into law in West Virginia last year, the cities of Huntington, Charleston, and Parkersburg have established their POTA ordinances, and in several cases, expanded footprints and hours because it has been so successful so quickly in their communities. And now it is time for us to reap the benefits of an economic driver that would not currently exist in the state of West Virginia if it were not for the hard work and perseverance of many folks here in Morgantown. It is important to stress the fact that POTA, or DORA as it's called in other states, is really about economic vitality, not alcohol. Certainly, alcohol is central to its operation, but really, POTA's ability to attract people into a place is what we're after. It's also why other communities across the nation and across the state are using POTAs to create vibrant dining and shopping districts and attract patrons and new businesses alike. Some examples? You can find POTAs across Ohio, in Athens, Marietta, Dayton, Columbus, Cincinnati Bowling Green. Actually, over 118 communities in Ohio have DORAs, many of which are college communities like ours. Likewise, in Virginia, cities like Manassas, Lexington, and Winchester, among others, have POTAs. And I've also personally been to POTA communities in South Carolina and Georgia. The fact is, the districts where POTAs employed do not descend into bedlam, they thrive. POTAs increase foot traffic into town centers, create thriving social hubs that can benefit local businesses, they aid restaurants and businesses that are primarily in the central business districts, and they attract patrons to downtown and highlight the area as a destination for dining and entertainment. I understand some folks may be apprehensive and that other communities started with limited days, but they've already expanded them, as I mentioned, because they're so successful. We have the benefit of real data from others in our own state. Let's use it to our advantage and do this right from the get-go. POTA will not increase intoxicated and unruly behavior in our community either. There are built-in controls, like One ID, One Drink, operating hours that end before late nightlife, container size control, you can't bring your own, and more things. Ultimately, it's still not illegal to be, it's still not legal to be drunk in public, and of course, that will be enforced. Downtowns across the nation are disappearing as businesses move into strip malls and retail developments, and ours is no exception. We have to change, and we have to innovate. This is not a tool that can be used by Suncrest Town Center, Westridge Park, or other developments outside city limits. This is a tool that was given to municipalities. It was given to us. There are so many people in Morgantown working every day to save our downtown. Many of them are here in this room. Give them this tool that will get patrons and visitors out of their cars and spending not just money but time in our downtown. I want to see our sidewalks, restaurants, storefronts, museums, galleries, and more, full of people who have made our downtown a destination. Don't you? This program clearly has tremendous support from the community. When was the last time this many people attended in support of something? I urge you to pass the POTA ordinance covering downtown and Wharf Districts and operating seven days a week. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Al Bonner. I live 225 Moore Street in South Park. And obviously, you know, I've owned jeans for 39 years. Some of them have been good, some of them have been bad. You know, business is tough. And I'm pretty much deaf. I can't hear what everybody was talking about. But all I know is that anything that you guys could pass that could help businesses, I'm in favor of. I mean, it's a tough, it's a tough business. It gets tougher every year. And, you know, I feel for the businesses downtown, and I mean, they're fighting against a lot of things. I'm kind of on an island over there, and I, you know, I miss out some of the things that are down here. But, you know, anything you guys can do to help them, I'm all in favor of. Thank you.
Thank you, Al.
Just giving everybody a second in case there's anyone else. And we're going to close this public hearing? Oh, good. See, that's why we wait a second.
Hi, my name's Amy DeBon. I just moved back here. I grew up here. I grew up on Park Street, 312 Park Street. I currently now live in South Parker, First Ward, really, 304 Waitman Street. And after listening to everybody and moving back here, my family is the Sanders family from Sanders Forecovering that rebuilt Seneca Center. And I can tell you right now, seeing downtown in its current condition, for me, who grew up here and used to walk across the Pleasant Street Bridge and come downtown and go to the Warner Movie Theater, go to the Metropolitan with my grandmother, walk up and down as a child in grade school at Second Ward when I was 12 years old, is heartbreaking to see that it's not what it used to be. I see these beautiful businesses, the river business, the jewelry business that's there, a couple of good restaurants, and it's like, why not bring that vibrancy back? You know, the night art walk, it was amazing, like to come down here and just see that and see those people walking around, and to see these beautiful musicians out on the street playing up at the bar up there. I mean, we're all adults at this point, you know? And I think that, you know, this ordinance, this town desperately needs it, you know? I dread having to go to Walmart to go shopping. I would much prefer to be coming down here instead of shopping Mountain to get whatever little things that I need, you know? Anything we can do to build this community back up and bring it back to life would be wonderful, you know? And I would hope that you all would lean into that. So, thanks.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else wishing to speak? All right. We're going to close this public portion. Next item is, under unfinished business, consideration of approval of a second reading of an ordinance authorizing and regulating private outdoor designated areas in the city of Morgantown. The first reading was 1/16/2024. Ask our attorney, Ryan Simonton, to just tell us a little bit about it.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance would create a private outdoor designated area as authorized by state law. These areas are areas, as it seems the Council and members of the public well know, that allow people, patrons at participating licenseed restaurants or bars to take an alcoholic drink from the establishment, carry it with them as they move around through the district and go to other establishments that would like to allow them in with that drink as well. The basic area covered in the district in the ordinance before you is downtown and the Wharf District. It extends from generally Willie Street in the north to South High Station, goes between Spruce and Chestnut Streets in the Wharf District, goes from Walnut Street down to the Marriott Waterfront Place Hotel. The operating days and hours in the ordinance presented are Thursday, Friday from 4:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday, Sunday from 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. I know there has been discussion about extending those operating days, and that would require a motion to amend by Council this evening. Otherwise, the details of the ordinance generally follow the state law, authorizing enactment of these districts. Have been discussed with Council, although I can answer any questions about those as you would like. You all had spoken with your legislators about updates to that legislation that would assist participation in the districts and assist them in succeeding. There's been legislation introduced to ensure that private fair and festival permits can operate within private outdoor designated areas at the same time. And when that legislation was referred to the House Economic Development Committee, committee substitute or committee amendment was passed that removed the requirement for a joint and several liability agreement among participating license orders. That's been a significant concern among the working group of stakeholders here who've been looking at that. That is going next to House Government Organization, so still in the process of becoming law. It is something that you could change in your ordinance as needed if that legislation passes. There's currently a reference to it, but nothing that would interfere with passing the ordinance as addressed tonight. I think that's all the description I have, but should you need anything else, I'm happy to address that as well.
All right. Can we have a motion? Move to approve?
Second.
Thank you. And then any comments that anyone has?
Mayor, at this time, I would like to move to amend the ordinance by providing that the operating times will be Monday through Friday, 4:00 to 10:00 p.m., and Saturday and Sunday, 10:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m.
I second the motion.
I would like to discuss
Yes, please.
A possible alternative for that motion?
Yes.
And that would be having it maintain its current hours, but allowing the city manager the opportunity to open it at any given moment, so as to not open up the potential floodgates. It allows us an opportunity to make sure that we can enforce everything properly, but allows the city manager to open it Monday through, Monday through Wednesday would be the additional days, so that it doesn't prevent us from doing the seven days a week, but also allows us to get our footing.
My concern with this is
Let's get a second on that motion, and then we can talk about him. Sarah, a second on that motion?
That wasn't a motion, it was a discussion, wasn't it?
It was a discussion.
It was more of a discussion.
Oh, more of a discussion, all right. We are going to discuss it, sorry. Good point.
My concern with that, the ordinance already allows the city manager to essentially close a POTA at any time if it's deemed to have any type of issues. And we have requirements through state legislation that requires signage, and I think that's going to be a significant number of signs. You have to have signage like entering or exiting POTAs at each sidewalk, at each crossing street, where to, you know, tell people, you're entering a POTA, these are the hours, these are the days, these are the rules, you're now exiting a POTA, no drinks beyond this point. And my concern would be that changing that signage after a couple of months, as many of our other, as Huntington has already expanded, Charleston is seven days a week, and having great success with this, it's going to be a significant cost to redo signage and things.
I'm not so much worried, though, about the signage, but because if we have the city manager, if we have it written in a way that the city manager could open up at any time, as I understand, there's places in Ohio, City Attorney Ryan Simonton, there's places in Ohio where the POTA is greenlit on their website?
I'm familiar with Athens doing that. Their website indicates when the POTA is operating and when it is not.
So I don't see why we couldn't have signage that ensures that Thursday through Sunday, I'm trying to get my days correct, Thursday through Sunday, but then allow it where we can have access to ensure that the city manager could open up the POTA. I feel like that would be reasonable, because I have had concerns, and I want, for the record, I am in favor of the POTA. But I have had concerns caused from several citizens in terms of having it open in that regard. And in order for me to meet in the middle, I feel like the best way or best avenue would be to allow the city manager to open it up so be to allow the city manager to open it up so that there's not a lot of red tape or paperwork to go through to have the events, like the German Christmas festivals that a lot of places do, to allow the drinking for the seven days. But also, it allows us to relegate it to four days instead of the full seven. It's kind of my thought.
What are your thoughts on events versus seasonal opportunities? What are your thoughts there? For example, Christmas shopping or summertime or-
I think leaving it written so that the city manager can just open the P O D A up, it makes it available to us at any moment. As opposed to being relegated to just four days or just the seven days.
You don't mind my asking? What's your concern?
I, well, because we are a college town that is notorious for drinking, and I understand that the time limits are outside of the drinking hours. But if somebody is using downtown, especially Monday through Wednesday, which most businesses are not operating heavily at that time, I do see the benefit of it opening up the hours for people to have dinner and stuff like that. But I would rather see, I would rather see it in action first, because my concern still comes to somebody else, someone getting intoxicated in one place, going to another, and the former business being held responsible. I would just like, I'd feel more comfortable if I saw it in place and we left safeguards in place with the city manager to be able to open it up for the seven days.
Can I guess if college students taking advantage is your concern, is that not more likely to happen Thursday, Friday, Saturday than Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday?
I mean, it is likely to happen, I'm not questioning that. But at the same time, our police presence is heavier on the weekends.
After eleven P M., when the college bars open.
Look, I'm just telling you, because you, I've always said that you are here to speak on behalf of the people that have reached out to you, and I've had people reach out to me with these concerns. You can take it or leave it, but what I'm saying right now is to ensure that those peoples' concerns are heard and to allow us to have the P O D A, allow us to have safeguards in place to continue to have the seven days as you're pushing for by allowing the city manager to open it up like they do in Athens, Ohio, which is not out of line, and having something in place for the people to be aware, we can give the businesses the seven days that they want while also being able to maintain and get used to the process. Because this is new for everybody. But if everyone is in disagreement with me, that's fine. I am for the P O D A. I just felt like it's important to do my due diligence and to speak on behalf of the people that have reached out to me, and I saw it as a way to meet in the middle for both parties.
How would this be initiated? Who would do the requesting?
What do you mean?
Who's going to go to the city manager and say, I'd like to have this open?
Well, I mean, if we're trying to have them open during the week, typically, there'd probably be an event of some sort, I'm sure. So, that's where, that was my thought process, is they would reach out to the city manager and say, we're trying to host this downtown event. So, rather than going through the hoops of all the different event licensing, it can be as simple as opening the P O D A.
It would be, it would be a middle ground. It would be a way that sometimes it would be shut, and that most of the time it would be open, and that if somebody wanted to do a week-long event or they wanted to do a single event, that they would just make a request.
Or students moving in, like, there are times where we know that we're going to have a lot of people in town. It's not a secret. Like, for instance, the Great Race that I helped try to create the communication that's coming to Morgantown in June, that's an opportunity to have the P O D A available. It's outside the hours, but it would be a great opportunity to have that available to us. So, being able to have the opportunity for the city manager to just open it up for other events may be beneficial. And be able to take into account what other citizens are saying, what their concerns are, and not ignoring them, but also allowing us to respond to our business owners that would like to see it as seven days a week.
I don't appreciate the implication or ignoring anyone's concerns. I certainly am not. I spoke to likely the same citizens that you did and agreed with them as the committee to approve the licensing is put in place, that we, there were a few things that could be added to the rules and regulations, such as staff training, things like that. We're certainly not ignoring anybody's concerns.
I don't believe that I use the word ignoring. If I did, I apologize.
I appreciate that. I think it would help with, if someone wanted to have a night specifically that they knew that there wasn't a P O D A downtown for some other type of event, it would allow for that as well.
But again, I am one person, so I'd love to hear everybody else's opinion on it.
As a former business owner in Morgantown, I had a bar and a restaurant twenty-three years ago. I started it twenty-three years ago, maybe a little bit later than that, but for fourteen years I ran a business, and I can't even imagine the possibilities I would have had if I'd have had P O D A then, because I think this is going to be great for downtown. I think it's going to bring in a lot of people, and I'm one hundred percent behind this. I think this is going to-
I feel like I need to clarify again, I'm not against P O D A. I'm just questioning the seven days versus four days with the amendment to make it so that the seven days would be a call from the administration.
Counsel, I appreciate where you're coming from and trying to find that middle ground. I think Counselor Kueckie asked a question about how would somebody initiate a Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday? And an event is sort of an easy one, but what if it's not an event? And again, it's Christmas shopping and do a handful of business owners approach the city manager, how much lead time is required? It seems a little potentially cumbersome. It may be more confusing in terms of that process, or do we, do they come to us and then we bring it forward? So, I just see those as potential obstacles in implementing this fully.
I understand. And as it's written, just for clarification, as it's written, the city manager can shut it down at any time in the event that there are issues.
That's correct, counsel.
Yeah, I had heard from people that were wanting to be sure that there was some time that they could go downtown, that they would not have a P O D A. So, that was just up for consideration. And I am totally in favor of P O D As. I've been in lots of places where they were. Savannah, for instance, Georgia, where you could carry your cup wherever. It's perfectly in line with good business practices. It's just trying to find the balance so that you could have different types of situations when you wanted them.
Still don't think everyone that's going to be walking down the street is going to be carrying a beverage. It's not going to be like-
No, I do have-
I didn't say that.
I did.
No, 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 I'm just-
Initially, I was worried it would become Las Vegas, essentially. And I don't suspect it's going to be that.
When there's not a P O D A, not every night is going to be like a fair and festival where there's like hundreds of people walking down the street. Like, usually, it's probably going to be like me and my husband.
If we had, if we had a lot of activity downtown every night, I would be fine.
That would be great.
I'm just, I'm just trying to make sure that whatever someone's event is, that they would have a place in the downtown. So, if the amendment goes as I can see it's likely going, I'd be just fine. It's just wanting to make sure that we're considering all of our options.
I'm curious. You know, I asked the question, how do we start it if we only put it four days? How do we stop it if it's not working?
That's a good question. We haven't tried it yet, have we? But certainly, certainly-
If there were safety concerns expressed by the police department, or there are other factors that would determine that there were some extenuating circumstances that would put any of our, the public's safety at risk, certainly, that, those would go into the consideration of curating one.
And we'll have a limited number of, you know, bars and restaurants who are licensed to participate in P O D A, and all of that permission initiates with the city. So, if the city manager feels the need to suspend a P O D A or stop it altogether if there's some catastrophe that happens, we have that list, and it's a matter of sending a letter to each business, I would think.
I don't think we're planning a catastrophe. I think we're planning on being-
I'm not planning on a catastrophe, certainly.
I think if there were a time too that you wanted to close it down, very similar that we do with parking meters, you can, we bag the meters, I'm sure you could bag the signs and put something out if somebody wanted to have an event that was trying to talk about, you know, sobriety and making that choice to abstain from alcohol, and the request came in to close it for a specific time, I'm sure that, you know, a notification and a covering up the bags, but basically saying to the bar owners or whoever is selling the beverages and the cups says, you know, during this time, you know, you can't participate in the P O D A, it's not operating right now. That would be probably a fairly practical way to stop that.
So, where are we?
I guess the-
Call the question on the amendment? Is that where we're at? Probably.
I think so.
All right. Ready?
Yep.
On the amendment. Deputy Mayor Boganum.
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. The amendment passes unanimously. And then we're on to the main amendment. Are there, I mean, the main amendment, the main, pardon me. Is there any discussion? Certainly appreciate everyone who came out to speak.
I certainly do.
Since it passed unanimously, the first time it's likely to pass, but we'll, we'll see how it goes.
I very much appreciate everyone, as my lovely husband pointed out, it's been a long time since we had this many people come and speak, when they're not angry at us about something, when they're encouraging, when they're encouraged about something that we're doing. So, I very much appreciate everyone who took the time and came down and waited the twenty minutes that we were late. Yeah, I worked very hard on this for a number of years with the city attorney and different state delegates, and I continue working very hard. I'll be in Charleston tomorrow and again next week, working on the changes to the state legislation that a lot of our local business owners have suggested. I look forward to getting it right.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Appreciate everyone's work on this and look forward to the vote and putting it in place. So-
Sounds good.
Are you ready?
Yep.
All right, call the board. Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. All right. Boards, boards and commissions.
Mayor, would you like to start at one end and work down?
That would be perfect. I will start with you.
Mayor, I'd like to nominate Mark McCoy to the Cultural Arts Commission.
All right. Second?
Second.
Yes. Okay.
Mayor, I would like to nominate Brennan Williams as our Fifth Ward Planning Commissioner.
All right. Acclamation?
Yep.
All right. Oh, yeah, second, thank you. All right. You have one?
I would like to nominate Nikki Bowman Mills for the Cultural Arts Commission.
You have a second?
Second.
All right. Acclamation?
And I'd like to nominate Patrick Kirby for the Land Reuse and Preservation Agency.
Is there a second? Thank you. Acclamation?
Yep.
Okay.
And I would like to nominate Ashley Swanson for the Human Rights Commission.
All right. Acclamation? All right. Oh, second.
Second.
All right, thank you. All right.
Should be one more.
Yeah, I think we're waiting on one more. Public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution, so if there's anyone wishing to speak, this is the time to come up to the podium and we can talk about some of the other subjects that you may not have gotten to speak about earlier. And it's, you manning the lights? There'll be some lights that'll give you guidance if you state your name and your address.
My name is Annie Cronin York. I'm in Seventh Ward. Councilman Kueckie has asked me to speak more loudly. I will do my best.
It helps.
It's not on? I would like to address the ordinance designating Norwood Fire Station as the safe surrender site. I read the state code, which is much longer than what the city has proposed, for good reason. And this is clearly lifted directly from the state code. I find that West Virginia's code is largely incomprehensible and poorly written. I found one section that I can read and understand, and that's on homeowners associations and how to regulate them. So, my issues with this are that it's safe surrender for an infant who are thirty days old or younger, but this is to be anonymous and not to, they don't have to have papers with them. So, if there's no birth certificate, how is the station to determine how old the baby is? Secondly, it says the child is to be dropped off by a parent, but if it's anonymous, we don't know who's dropping the child off, if it's a parent or not. One of my just peeve parts here is that the station takes possession of a child after it's put in the FedEx drop box. Possession is for chattels, a book, a car, those things can be taken possession of. With the child, we take guardianship or custody. So, I'd like to see that changed in the wording of the ordinance to custodian or guardianship being taken by the station. Because as the state code, that the child should be taken within thirty minutes to the nearest emergency room. Morgantown is one of two cities in West Virginia that actually has a pediatrics emergency room. Could we please specify that they'd be taken there? And if you take them to the regular E R., that takes another hour to get them transferred to pediatrics. Take them to mine general, they don't have pediatrics E R. It only makes sense, since we have that asset here, that we use it. So, if we could just change that to not the nearest, but to the children's hospital emergency room. In paragraph, let's, point seven, section D. Sorry, my bad, point six. It says that the emergency medical provider physically retrieves the child from newborn safety, so will immediately arrange for the child to be taken to the nearest hospital room, and shall have implied consent to any and all appropriate medical treatment. Is that the person from the fire station bringing the child in who's got the in loco parentis ability, or is that the hospital who has the implied consent? And why is it implied and not actual? The child has been abandoned, as it were, and the fire station is taking custody or possession of the child. It wouldn't be implied consent, it would be actual consent. So, what I'm asking is that it be worded more carefully. Because, just because this is how the state has written it, doesn't mean they did it right. And I think we can almost always do better than the state did. Could be just me. My second issue. In the job postings for the city, there's a commercial inspector posted, and it talks about how the person inspects buildings and plans reviews and, oh, come on, I have three issues. But the only ADA mentioned in here is that they have some familiarity with the ADA. And again, under Title II of the ADA, municipality is required to have an ADA inspector and an ADA H R. compliance officer, neither of which the city has, nor does the county, but still, we can be better than the county. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
Thanks, Amy.
LJ Giuliani. I just wanted to, one, thank council for the consideration of the POTA ordinance. That goes on to a bigger story that we're trying to write for our downtown right now. And it was just a week ago, or maybe it was two weeks ago, that you had Craig Gossman come in here and his company performed a service for our city in Main Street, Morgantown, in our downtown. And what the goal is, is to create a, a district, a branding mechanism for our downtown. This POTA is part of that, that, that vision that we're, we're recreating. Our downtown and our communities that surround it, First Ward, Second Ward, Greenmont, South Park, Westover, there's thousands of people that, it's the heaviest concentration of people in Montingalia County. Our downtown is the heart center. We should be doing everything in our ability from a city level to put into action initiatives that will speak to a vision that is going to be welcoming to not just our residents, but also to others that are looking outside, that looks at, to Morgantown as a place that they might want to come to. We have so many opportunities in this, in the form of cultural dynamics, recreational dynamics, and all of those things are within, within footsteps from our downtown. Those, those things right there, we've got to own those, those opportunities. We have to scream them from the, from the rooftops of like, this is who we want to be. Because at the end of the day, studies like the Gossman Group that, that they performed, what's that's telling our, our community members is that we're, we're looking ahead, we're being proactive, we're, 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 we're telling the people outside of Morgantown that, whoa, these folks have a vision and we want to be a part of it. It's no lie, it's, it's no secret that West Virginia, we have an aging population. Well, let's flip the script here in Morgantown. We, we're always so tethered to the university and, and isn't it great to be able to have, have an asset like that? However, there's so many ways outside of just being a college town that we have before us. And we need to lean into those dynamics and we'll find out that those will be things that will serve the community as opposed to just one entity. Those will be things that will serve our university in a, in a positive way. And right now, that seems like it's a good idea that we can sort of help our university considering the last six months that, that we've witnessed. And I don't mean that in a derogatory way, but there's, there's pieces of our community that we're going to be losing in the next year or so. Cultural dynamics, people that would have been working in the language arts, people that's working in the arts, we're losing those pieces. And that's going to, that's going to have, have an, an impact on our community and who we are and who we've been. So we've got to be, work in a hyperdrive, the best, that's the best way I can put it, in ways to, to supplement those losses that we're going, that we're going to witness. So it's on us to craft a, 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 a vision in respect to our downtown that leans into the cultural arts, that leans into the recreation. So then at that point in time, you, you get people to recognize that this is a place where I can, I can create, this is a place I can recreate. And, and we'll find out, if we lean into those things, 10 years from now or even five years from now, we might find out, you know what, that was a, that was a, that was a heavy punch that we got a few years ago in respect to the, the losses that we had. But we reimagine ourselves in a way where now you attract a, a, a population of people that recognizes the things that we already know that we have, but, but we need to, we need to promote those in a way that, that others recognize it. Thanks. Thanks again for, for your vote tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi. Amy again. Amy DeBon. So I, I want to reiterate, I would agree. I think that this town has leaned too much on the university. When I was growing up, the university was here, but there was so much more to Morgantown than the university itself. Obviously, you know, as, when I was eight years old, we went on a, we used to go to field trips, on field trips to Seneca when it was still open as a glass factory. I think that the creative center of Morgantown, there is so much here and we do not take advantage of it. I don't think that the losses that are happening at the university have to dictate what happened here, what happens to the rest of us in the, in this town. I think we need to lean more into creating more of a voice for the creative people. You know, I spent many years in New York, in Jersey City, and when I drive along Beechhurst and I'm going up towards the CAC there, that whole thing where the PRT is running, and we've got like this big black vinyl thing that's going along the fence. Like, why don't we create the local artist banner and put that up along the fence? So if somebody's driving up there, they're seeing art, you know? Why don't we find an area where we can put some vibrancy of, of some graffiti artists and make a mural on a wall? I mean, driving down Beechhurst half the time and even over towards Donut's Boulevard, that whole section is always a mess. But if on the side of the building, we could put up like something that's from Shepherd Ferry or something locally, you know, Eddie Spaghetti of a mural that speaks to the town and the community to show that we are here and that we're alive and nobody's going away, you know? There is so much art in Appalachia, you know, and I'd like to see more of it in our town, you know? I drive through Thomas, I go down to Buckhannon. I mean, those towns are just beautiful, like I want to hang out there, I want to have a cup of coffee on the street. Make that here. I mean, this is Morgantown, WVU is here, and we don't need the sports to dictate what Morgantown is. There's so much more to us than that. And, you know, I will jump on any board or committee that's willing to start doing that. Thanks.
Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Chuck Campbell. I'm the president of the Morgantown City Firefighters Union, Local 313. I am here not only on behalf of my members, but at the request of my members, over large amounts of concerns and issues that have recently affected our employees. I believe the issues began back in July of '22 when the new personnel handbook was implemented. That started the ball rolling of what's been experienced lately. There has been little to no input in that, very late notification. The employees themselves didn't even receive the handbook until weeks, one, two weeks before it was implemented, didn't have time to read it, digest it, et cetera. That handbook resulted in a lot of changes experienced by the hall, or the employees. We're not opposed to the changes, we're not opposed to change. However, these changes have created a lot of issues. We all know that there's a holiday issue. Outside of that holiday issue, there's another issue related to the holidays when it comes to how the city is observing the holidays. We have moved to a four-day work week within the city for most employees. Firefighters and I believe police officers are still working seven days a week. You're all welcome. It seems as if we're observing those holidays whenever we feel it's necessary in the city, which is directly affecting the firefighters who are actually working the holidays, who aren't being compensated the way they should be compensated there. That moves into the new payroll system that was implemented December 23rd of 2023. So while everyone was home enjoying their holiday season, the firefighters were left at the fire stations to figure out how these time clocks worked and how payroll is going to be implemented. Little, no direction whatsoever, no guidance on what we were supposed to do. We had to figure it out on our own. And that resulted in payroll being incorrectly paid every pay period since that's been implemented. Why are we implementing these processes and then figuring out how to fix them later? Why is there no trial periods? Why do we have to be paid incorrectly and then fight to get our money back? New healthcare plan was put into effect. The old healthcare plan expired December 31st. New healthcare benefit cards, policy numbers, things like that weren't received until third week of January, forcing our members to cancel medical appointments or having to pay out of pocket. Supplemental insurances that employees have, their premiums were deducted out of payroll historically and traditionally. January 28th, we were advised those premiums would no longer be extracted, forcing us to contact our insurance providers and get our premiums caught up to speed within 48 hours. Some of our members were already dropped because of the lack of premiums, because the city didn't notify us that those premiums would no longer be extracted. Why are the employees being forced to be inconvenienced and have to fight for everything that's so simple? That should be worked out and figured out ahead of time? Why are we implementing these policies and these technologies without any kind of trial periods? We're just starting it and then figuring it out later? And employees are the ones suffering for it. If I could have 30 more seconds, I'd really like to finish on a good note.
Yeah, we're, we're good.
We are not opposed whatsoever to the new fire station, but we do share a lot of the same concerns the citizens are sharing. Egress, fiscal responsibility, the station amenities, you know, we're being told it's a very appealing station. I can tell you right now, maybe the fire chief or some of the fire administration have seen it, we've never seen it. We had one meeting, March 9th, 2023, that the firefighters were asked to be at and participated in that meeting. And that's the last time that the firefighters were ever consulted on this new station. Again, we appreciate it. We undoubtedly do need a new facility. That facility that we're in right now is 80 years old and has had no work or upgrades done to it. And we do appreciate the new facility. We'd just like to be part of the conversation going forward to make sure that we're receiving the best facility we can, seeing as how we do live one-third of our life in that building. I thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
Thank you, Chuck.
So I have a whole list here, but some of the people that are on here I know are no longer here. So if you are here and you would like to speak, you can speak a second time on another subject, or this is the public portion. So like, for instance, John Trumbull's on the list, but I don't think he necessarily has something else to say, so I'm not going to call each person on this list right now because it's such a long list. But yeah, but if there's someone else here whose name is on the list, I'm not trying to miss calling you, I'm just not calling out all the names because I believe many of them have already gone. So is there anyone else in the public portion that's interested in speaking?
You already got four minutes, Annie.
I'm sorry, but afraid to me again.
You can have about one. Let's do it.
Thank you for giving me a new commissioner. I understood there's a second one interviewing tonight, and I was kind of hoping to have both of the new ones at our next meeting on next Thursday, but it doesn't sound like that's going to happen for me. Just checking.
We put forth the names that we are putting forth.
But thank you for that.
At this point, and then we will.
I, I can say with certainty. Thank you. On behalf of the Human Rights Commission.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amy.
So anyone else wishing to speak? All right, we're going to close the public portion. Appreciate everyone who came to the first public hearing and to the public portion. It makes a big difference in Morgantown when people speak out about what they're interested in, even if we don't always agree. And also if we agree, either way. We're going down to new business. Consideration of approval of a resolution supporting the city of Morgantown seeking a grant from the Montgalia County Commission for funding the Ruby Summer Concert Series and the Fourth of July Celebration. Ask our manager, Kim Hawes.
Thank you, Mayor. There's been a lot of discussion tonight about supporting activities and events that would strengthen the downtown, bring, bring visitors to the downtown and help contribute to the quality of life of, of our community. This, this particular issue helps reinforce, some of the really positive activities have been going on recently, and I'm sure have happened in the past, but there's been an uptick here in the last couple of years in the number of events that have occurred at the Ruby McQuain Amphitheater and the WARP area. And those, those activities and programs have certainly demonstrated the city council's commitment to enhance those services that are provided for the public to help make the quality of life, to enhance it. And that has been made possible by participation from various entities, particularly the Ruby McQuain Trust Foundation that contributes tremendously to it, without which it would, it would not be what we experience today. Last year, we made application to the county commission, a similar application for a grant to help support the Ruby Summer Concert Series as well as our Fourth, Fourth of July Celebration. And this is the second year that we're, we're recommending that support from city council to make another application, same, same application again this year to help support those activities.
Great. Is there a motion?
Move to approve.
Second?
Thank you. And then is there any discussion? I'd say this is a fabulous project and we should continue to ask the county commission to help fund it. So if the clerk would call the roll unless there's somebody else wishing to speak. Yes. Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes, passes unanimously. Item B, consideration of approval, the first reading of an ordinance providing for the zoning reclassification of certain parcels of real estate in the First Ward, the city of Morgantown, tax district nine, tax map 48A parcel 12, commonly known as 1433 Dorsey Avenue, from an R1 single-family residential district to a B2 service business district, amending Article 1331 of the Planning and Zoning Code of the city of Morgantown, as shown on the exhibit here to attached and declared to be a part of this ordinance, as if the same were fully set forth herein. If our planner would please come up, Ricky Yeager.
Evening, Mayor, members of council. As, as previously mentioned, this ordinance would rezone about an acre parcel of land at the intersection of Lucky Lane and Dorsey Avenue. The planning commission held a public hearing on this matter on July, on July, January 11th, and found the petition to be consistent with the city's comprehensive plan and more specifically the future land use map or land management plan for the city, and also recommended that city council approve the petitioner's request. If approved on first reading, a second reading and public hearing would be scheduled in the next 30 days in accordance with West Virginia state code. And if you have any questions, please let me know. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Anyone, well, let's have a motion.
I'll move to approve.
A second.
Thank you. So anyone have any questions? I think we kind of covered this last meeting.
No.
All right. Clerk, please call the roll. Yes. Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Celine? Yes. Passes 5-1. Item C, consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance designated in the Norwood Fire Station as a safe surrender site to accept custody of children who are 30 days old or younger. And I'd note the word custody here, which I'm sure would be agreeable to one of our constituents.
constituents. And, let's see, is there a motion?
Move to approve. Second.
Okay. And then, if Emily Mazzarrielli, our assistant manager, had something to say on this.
Sure. I gave a little bit more detailed rundown last week, but the city's in the process of updating the Norwood Fire Station, similar to the South High Fire Station. It is very old and needed some expansions to make it more in line with the current fire station. But it, through the process of the renovation planning last year, I believe through the state code, made it available that local fire departments that are staffed 24 hours a day would be able to accept custody of a newborn 30 days old or younger, essentially using either in-person or newborn safety device, which is essentially allows you to open a door, place an infant inside, close the door, it locks, and it is no longer accessible from the outside, but becomes accessible from the inside, notifies emergency personnel through an alarm and notification system. And then that way, a child who may otherwise have been abandoned in not a safe environment is able to, you know, be taken to a safe place, a hospital, to be taken care of. So this ordinance sets up the process for designating that. This is the first in, this would be the first in Morgantown. I believe there's one other location in West Virginia as a whole, but does give mothers or parents of infant children who may otherwise be in crisis an opportunity to safely transfer the custody of their child and do so anonymously. We would love to expand this to other stations or other locations within the city or county as, you know, potential renovations or something like that exists, but currently, this is at the Norwood Fire Station, which is in Saberton. At this time, it is set to, would go into effect at the end of March, but we are working that in line with when those personnel get put back into that fire station that's currently under remodeling, and then we go through with the vendor a process to ensure all of the alarms are tested and for like, I think, I believe it's a seven straight day period.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
I think there was.
We already did the motion.
Oh, we did the motion. There we go, we're really motioned out. Is there anybody that has any other comments or questions?
Just a question, you may have answered this last time. Is this like a recommendation that the state has put forward for municipalities that can do so to do so versus a mandate?
It's not a mandate, it's just an opportunity. And so this has been in place in other states for, I believe, a little bit longer, and perhaps the attorney Simonton can give a little bit more background, but this is just something that became available to us more recently, at least at a fire station or other emergency staff 24-hour place.
Any other questions?
I believe hospitals have always been those, right?
I would like to address some of the concerns that were brought up at the podium tonight that are not in this particular ordinance. Are they things that we should consider before we consider the ordinance? Or?
Thank you, counselor. I can at least discuss those with you, although if our management has comments as well, certainly that's appropriate. So, this ordinance before you does follow the state enabling legislation. The state has adopted this law that is really intended to make sure that children in this situation are treated the best way possible, and everybody's interests are aligned in getting them to care. And the way it does that is by giving permission to people who ordinarily would have no right to take what is legally someone else's child and take them to a hospital and get them any care they may need and get them into custody of DHHR, or whatever that agency becomes named. So, it also, in doing that, provides some liability protections, provides that the parents who use the safe surrender site relinquish opportunities to make claims about, you know, what they would have done or what they would have liked done. And so, to preserve those legal rights of what will be our city firefighters, as well as the other people involved in the process, it's important to follow the state enabling legislation, which is why the ordinance in front of you does that. Couple brief comments on the topics that were addressed, just in the event that they may help explain. The state law does use possession when saying staff at the fire station can take possession of the child. It's not specifically explained in the statute why, but there's a separate provision of the act that provides for a petition for guardianship to be filed by DHHR. I don't believe that, in fact, the state law says take possession without a court order. I think ordinarily, to take custody or guardianship, a court order would be required, so probably the reason for the distinction in terms, but our ordinance does follow that statute. Likewise, there is a requirement to transport to the nearest emergency room in the state law. I think you probably should follow that, but there are provisions in the ordinance for the fire chief to adopt rules and regulations. Hopefully, those would say, this is your nearest emergency room to each of your fire stations. I imagine for our fire stations, in each instance, that would be the pediatric emergency room at the Children's Hospital. So, I think that's the care that people would receive, and hopefully, the regulations would spell that out. There's a question about whether, about the implied consent to treatment granted to the emergency medical services provider. That's provided under 49-4-201E. It is consent granted to an emergency medical services provider, that's a paramedic or an EMT. They have implied consent, I assume, because they're taking into custody a minor child who can't grant actual consent. That person can treat the child, give them any medical treatment they believe they need in their professional capacity without incurring liability. I think certainly there are practical concerns about the need to use an anonymous site to ensure the safety of children, that they get the best care possible in situations like this, but in a difficulty in knowing whether a child is 30 days old or a parent has left them there. But the state legislation dictates that that's how the authority can be granted, so that's what our ordinance does.
To summarize, if I hear you correctly, what you're saying is that the way this is written gives us some sort of protection in terms of applying or meeting the state's requirements for carrying this out.
That's correct.
And there are things that we might do as procedure that could be done internally that would address some of the concerns expressed tonight?
Certainly. Be happy to work with staff on those things.
Very good. Thank you.
Yep, this being a first reading. So, any other?
Other questions?
All right. Call or roll?
Deputy Mayor Buggonam?
Yes.
Bill Kowecki?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes. Passes unanimously. Now we're on to the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. There are a couple of items that I wanted to bring you.
I'm too little, Kim, I can't see it.
It's that big monitor right there.
Yes.
I'd like to bring to your attention, one is that there have been some questions from various individuals asked regarding the grant activity that's going on within the city and some of the plans we're making through our wonderful grant writer, Robyn Hess. She's extremely active, and I thought what I'd do is share with you a few of the grants that we're making application for and that we anticipate at least a good number of them coming back to us in the form of awards. One is the National Endowment for the Arts. This is a pre-application, and what it will do is allow us to expand, to improve Chancery Row Alleyway as kind of a place-making, streetscape, mural area for the community. That's a $50,000 grant with a 50-50 match, and we're hoping that that'll help stimulate the downtown as we've been talking about. We also have a assistance to firefighter grant, AFG, in the amount of $100,000 to help in the purchase of Luka compression devices. There's also, interestingly enough, as you all know, we have been discussing and haven't quite brought to fruition yet, I think is because of staffing issues, a process where communities, neighborhoods can rent equipment to help improve and better the neighborhoods. There's an AARP community tool lending program that we are making application for that will, that requires no match from the city, it's a $20,000 grant, and I think people are seeing the value of supporting local initiatives. There's an energy-efficient conservation block grant that we're working on. It's a $75,000 grant, as well as an outdoor recreation legacy program. Requires a 50, it's a grant that can be awarded in the amount of $100,000 to $5 million with a 50-50 grant match. Those are just a few of the grant applications that we're making application to. We certainly are waiting for the federal budget to pass so that we can determine whether we receive the earmarks, the congressional directed spending that we've made application for. We have not received any further word until that budget can be passed. So there are a lot of activities going on, just wanted you to be aware of, that we're active in trying to secure outside funds, federal funds, state funds, to help supplement what we're trying to do with our, with our own budget. Also wanted to let you know that we received notice this week that we received a DEP demolition fund in the amount of $650,000. And that's significant because we've started the process of doing some major demoing. We certainly have had a demoing program throughout the city for a number of years. It's going to intensify as we look at the Ridgewood Project and how we're going to approach that. Just wanted to let you know that the asbestos abatement applications are due back into the city on the 13th. And that's going to be the first step in being able to complete the demolition program because of the requirement for asbestos abatement. Also wanted to thank council for the support. We as staff, certainly Ryan and Emily and members of council, Danielle, have worked really hard along with our state representatives to pass the POTA. And I've certainly been around the country many times over, but these types of programs are really, really critical, and I'm thankful for council for your foresight. Thank you for doing that. And finally, the budget process, we just had a major budget meeting today with our finance department, and they, we've had to make some adjustments with revenue projections. That's one of the, I've spoken to you before, that one of the downfalls for the way we do budgeting in West Virginia is we have to project revenues now, and we're not really going to know what they are until the end of the fiscal year. And so, we're constantly making adjustments to the revenues. And we anticipate that next week, you'll have in your position the executive budget document, which is our recommendation, along with the summary of what's in the budget document that you're going to be able to review. And so, the week of the 19th, some of you have already received notice of some budget sessions that you can come into, as we did last year. We felt, and we received feedback from you, that the one-on-one sessions or the two or three-on-one sessions are really beneficial to be able to really delve into the budget and try to answer any questions or consider some of the projects or activities that you wanted to see considering the budget. So, the week of the 19th, those budget projects meetings will occur, and then we'll have enough time to make final adjustments on the revenues and on the budget items to, in anticipation of presenting the budget to council on the 4th and the 19th of March. So, that's the skinny on the budget. I can tell you now that our finance department is thrilled that it's over. That's all I have. Thank you.
It's not over yet, we haven't made our changes.
That's true. Well, I said almost.
And what did you say, we'd get copies?
Next week, you'll receive copies of those. It'll be your regular budget document, executive budget document.
Thanks.
Report from city clerk.
Yes, Mayor, I want to first say thank you to the city council for your appointments to the boards and commissions. I want to share to those out in the community that we do have many vacancies, about 19 or 20. If you, folks are interested, they could go to our website, our city's website, at MorgantownWV.gov. If you hover over the word government, down below will be a list of boards and a list of commissions, and you could select one of the boards and commissions, and information about that board or commission will pop up and tell you who is on the board, a little bit about the board, what their purpose is. So, I just want to encourage folks who might be, would like to get involved in our city government to check it out. If you don't mind, I'd just like to read some of the boards and commissions that we do have vacancies for folks. Civilian Police Review and Advisory Board, Fire Civil Services Commission, Fire Code Board of Appeals, Health and Wellness Commission, Historic Landmarks Commission, Human Rights Commission, ICC Building Code Board of Appeals, Personnel Board, Planning Commission, Sister Cities Commission, Tree Board, Urban Landscape Commission, Ward and Boundary Commission, and Woodburn Commission. So, I look forward to getting some applications. If there is a way for folks to apply from our website, and you can do it all online, and it comes to the city clerk's office, and each application goes to all of our council members as well, so you all are notified immediately when we have someone that's interested, and I think that's a great feature to have. So, thanks for the appointments tonight. I want to share that, you know, the City of Morgantown and the Morgantown Police Department, we're looking for folks who would like to serve our community. We are authorized to have 76 ward police officers, however, according to the chief yesterday, I believe, we're down 18 police officers. That's pretty significant. So, the Police Civil Service Commission will be holding entry-level police officer exams on March 16th at 9:00 a.m. A little bit about our coverage area, it's about, our community is about 11 square miles. The population is 30,000 when the students are not here. When the students are here, it's about 60,000, give or take. Folks who are interested, there is a, if you're hired, you can live an hour driving time away from our police station, thanks to council who approved that, I think, last year or the year before. That expanded our area that folks can live and still serve our community. So, if you're interested, you can go to MorgantownPD.com and... So if you're interested, you can go to MorgantownPD.com and learn more about what our police department does, some of the career options that we have and we're offering. And there's a button there that says apply now and that comes directly to the clerk's office so we can get everyone in for the March test. And if you have any questions, certainly you can reach out to the city clerk's office and we'll get in touch with someone there at the police department if you have questions that we couldn't, can't answer. So I want to say congratulations to Captain Chad Reyes, who was most recently promoted to captain and we're proud of him for his accomplishments. And then lastly, on March 16th, we will be having another promotional exam for sergeant. So look forward to sharing who will take that role at the end of March. And that concludes my report.
Thank you very much. City Attorney.
Thank you, Mayor.
The Bow Park project to construct the new marilla pool is ongoing. We had a meeting this morning with the utility providers about relocation to move that forward and may have an easement coming before council depending on where they select location. Project planning meetings occurring tomorrow and so the project continues to move along. After your adoption of the ordinance establishing the private outdoor designated area tonight, you will be appointing members of a committee that will review applications for participating licensees and select those who will receive the city permit that's required to apply to West Virginia ABCA so that they can participate in the, in the district. That's, that will be the city, council appointments will be one member of city council, two members of businesses within the designated area that are, that serve alcohol, and two members of businesses in the area that do not serve alcohol. Seems like there is no shortage of business owners within the district that are interested in this project, but the, the area will begin operating in mid-May and so getting people on board so you have that committee in place so that the city can begin taking applications for permits gets to be a fairly short timeline. So we'll, we can work with, with council and staff as needed to try to get some people in front of you so you can make those appointments. There are also some administrative tasks like signage and cup designation and other things as well as working on some standards of conduct with Main Street and stakeholders that, that we'll continue to work on as well as with council members who participate in this. That is all I have to report.
Thank you very much. Now we're on to city council members. Would you like to start?
Sure. Sure, yes, Mayor. The Foundry Street lighting project, which is the lighting under the bridge leading from Deckers Creek rail trail down to the amphitheater started today, I was told, so hopefully that is in progress.
How many years? Do we know how many years?
A lot.
13 or 10 or what?
20, 20, 20.
10 plus, I don't recall.
It's over 10.
Yeah.
I've been on that committee before several times.
Yeah, so that's in, supposedly began today. And we have a, there is a MUB meeting, special meeting this Friday, that's just really to look and review proposed addition or renovations for the office facility on the Green Bag Road. So that's what that special meeting is on Friday and then our regularly scheduled MUB meeting a week from today that not, has not had a published agenda yet. And I would just like to thank everybody that came out and spoke regarding the POTA. It was great to have such public input. It was really helpful, so thank you for those that do speak. And that's, that's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you. I would like to thank the representative of our firefighters who spoke this evening. I continue to hear various issues, most recently about the new pay system. And I do think it's important that council as a whole hears those and is, and is aware of those ongoing issues. It's frustrating for me when I hear about them. I can only imagine how frustrating it is for the employees who are dealing with them, particularly when payday is on a Friday and they're not able to get a hold of most people inside the city offices. So thanks to Chuck Campbell for coming out and relaying those to the rest of council. It was announced this week that the City of Morgantown is doing another iteration of the Morgantown Citizens Academy, which I have participated in, in the past as a, as a counselor and it was eye-opening for me. It's one of my favorite things that the city does, one of my favorite initiatives and programs. The, that will start again in March. Applications are currently open until February 23rd. So if that is something that anyone is interested in, you can find more information on the city website, the city social media has a link to that. I definitely recommend it. Thank you to everyone who came and spoke on behalf of POTA. It was really great to see, it wasn't even just the downtown business community, business owners from all over the city came. And I think that that's really important because, as they said, like a rising tide lifts all ships or, you know, whatever. It is what people like to say and I loved seeing people like Bill Rittenhour who has a brewery that does not have a liquor license, who as of right now is not able to participate in POTA. And Al Bonner who owns Jeans, who is not within our district, who is not able to participate in POTA. And they are still here supporting this on behalf of, of their fellow business owners. So, and I appreciate your support, City Manager, you all have been great and I appreciate you recognizing that it's, it's going to be a good thing for the city and it can be well-managed and well-run and I believe we can do that.
Thank you.
As such, as I mentioned, I will be in Charleston the next, I'll be in Charleston tomorrow and again later this week. I'd say that I will largely be advocating on behalf of some of the changes that the business owners are, are requesting, but other things as well, I know that not many city council people are able to participate in those days. Tomorrow is Mon County Day at the legislature. Early next week is the West Virginia Municipal League. If there's anything that you want us to try to address, those of us who are able to go, definitely reach out. I'm willing to, to track down anyone down there. Sometimes they, they like to hide, you gotta, you gotta feel them out, find them at lunchtime and stuff. So happy to do that. The only other thing I wanted to address is, I guess it's not necessarily an announcement, but just information, I was recently appointed to a federal advocacy committee with the National League of Cities. I will be on their 2024 Human Development Committee that deals with things like workforce, education, early childhood care, public health care, mental health, immigration, addiction, things like that. I am very much looking forward to starting that appointment this month and continuing next, next month when, when the National League of Cities meets in Washington DC. And I'm very proud to represent the City of Morgantown and all the municipalities of West Virginia on that, so.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good thing.
And thanks to Travis Blosser with the West Virginia Municipal League. He is the director and he recognized my skillset and made a recommendation for me to be appointed to that committee and I appreciate him very much.
Well, I just want to just, I'm always short and brief, so I just want to say thank you to every, all the business owners for coming out. POTA's going to be a good thing and I'm, I think it's going to work out really well for the city. So that's all I have for today. And Chuck, thank you for coming, always. So that was it.
Counselor Quickey.
Thank you. I want to thank our, our city clerk who's been an advocate for all of our, and has kept us straightforward on our boards and commissions and been an advocate for having us soliciting people to participate. I'd like to put in a pitch, we're looking for a historian, anybody out there who's interested in history or has some expertise, certainly we could use them on the Historic Landmarks Commission. Been wanting to do that and it's been very helpful to us in the past and has continued to be. So that's my own personal ask, I guess, for that particular position, which has been difficult to fill, we've had good people in the past. Also too, I wanted to address, we had, I know we're thinking that we need to look at our zoning laws and, and I'm certainly willing to do that, needs to be done, but I know that that's something that's a long-term process. We had talked about the possibility of introducing, and forgive me if I get the term incorrectly, but multi-unit housing in the B1 district as permissible. And I was told that that could be done rather quickly. Rather than submit that to the process of going through review of all of our zoning, I'd like to see that paid some attention to and move forward so that if we have the opportunity to introduce that into some of our new B1 districts, that we can do that and make it much more palatable for anybody who wants to do that. Other than that, I'm pleased that we're moving forward and I am very optimistic about what can be done. We have sort of, I don't know what you would call it, in our enthusiasms for some things, I think we, we, we kind of crash forward very, not with the results that somehow need to still be manipulated or massaged to a place where we get them perfect. I just want to say to the fire department that we hear you and we certainly want to do that, we want to move this forward and make things as good as it can be. I think we demonstrated that already in the support that we're giving you with the new buildings and what have you. Bear with us and let's see if we can't get, and work with us, and let's see if we can't get this right. Thank you for coming. And that's all I have.
Thanks.
I will reiterate, thank Chuck for coming in today and talking about that. I am disappointed that many of the firefighters didn't feel they were heard in terms of how to design the fire department. As a teacher, it's always important in our schools to feel like we're being heard for how we would like to see our classrooms ran since we're the ones that spend the majority of our time there and hopefully that's something we can address. Was your lid put down in the trash?
No.
My trash didn't come until 7:00 a.m. today. I sleep in.
However, it didn't rain.
Okay, well, there's that. That was, my, my trash was left in the street, so I had to put that back on the curb. On another note, for, I got messages because the First Ward Neighborhood Association meeting has now become every three months, so quarterly. People were asking when the next meeting is and that is March 25th and that can also be seen on our Facebook page. And then the other thing is now over at the Wilds Hill Community Center in the Eureka Gallery, we have the Han Dynasty exhibit, which was donated to us from Suzhou, China, our sister city, and I think everyone should have gotten an invitation in their email. If not, Saturday, February 10th, from 6:00 to 10:00, there's going to be a reception celebrating the art exhibit that was presented to us. And then I would also like to thank our city manager for helping get the framing and everything for the artwork that we have on display. So if you get the opportunity, I did get to see many of the art pieces, they're very large in size, these stone rubbings, but they are actually really neat. We had an opportunity to show some of them to the students at the school and they were fascinated by it, they're really cool. And I'm just trying to get to my end of my wrestling season so that I can breathe again.
Can I ask you a question? I haven't been to the show yet. Someone asked me, is it on cloth or is it on paper?
The stone rubbings themselves were on, it's like, it's weird, yeah, that's it. It's like, almost like a cloth paper, so rice paper would probably be, it was very thin, very light. I felt like I was going to break them when I was touching them.
I don't know.
Most typically that'd be the way it was done.
Yeah, I was very nervous with it.
Yeah, it's very thin and I think they said that they had to, on the process, they had to get the, the paper cloth, they had to get the fibers wet and then work them into the stone to make the rubbings. So you can sort of see when you look at them that some of them are very fragile looking and even like a little bit, I don't want to say cut, but there's definitely some separation a few places because the, the material that they used was so delicate. So it's amazing and then it came all folded up and they had to unfold it all and then apparently, I'm sure they held their breath, they ironed it or something to try.
Did they really?
I think so.
The technique involved, I know is the whole class, because in my head I was like, oh, you take paper and a crayon. That is not, that is not the case.
That is not what they were doing.
No, that is not it.
And I think there's a video, I've not seen the video, but I think there's a video that explains.
They're going to put the video, it's going to kick off the exhibit on Saturday at 6:00 because we had a meeting about that last night.
Yes.
The video will kick us off at 6:00, to be there right at 6:00.
So each of you has some of these that you can pass around.
That's it, oh, that's it, yeah, I'm done, sorry.
Okay, no problem. Yes, so these were created through a collaboration of staff at Morgantown and Bow Park, just so that you all can either hand them directly to someone or put them up, but just to try to get people to be aware of this because it's really cool and I'm looking forward to attending. Guess I just want to do similar, how much I appreciated all of the business owners that came to talk about our POTA and the work of legislators and Counselor Trumbull on making sure, and our attorney especially, work on, work on all of this so that we could have a POTA in our area and I look forward to seeing how it works. And I think that one thing that we had mentioned is that somewhere along in the process, it would be great to have some kind of internal, external evaluation of the POTA so that next year, maybe at this time or whenever it's appropriate, that if there were any changes that people wanted to make for ease of use, we should kind of just make sure we do that after all the hard work, keep making it as functional as possible. And I also look forward to going to Charleston and working with the State Municipal League and then in the spring, I think we have, we have five people going or four people going to the National League of Cities?
Four.
Four, so we have four people going to the National League of Cities, which is definitely, I think we've had three before, I'm not sure we've had four, so we will be in force, working on all the different issues at the federal level. And I really appreciate everyone taking time out of their week to attend and lobby on behalf of the city. So I appreciate that very much and thank you to the firefighters for telling us about their experiences and now our challenge is to work on making sure that all of it is taken care of. So thank you.
Can I have one more thing real quick?
Please.
If Counselor Butcher is watching, we hope you feel better quick.
Very good.
Good. And that's the end of our meeting, except for...
Pursuant to West Virginia State Code Section 6-9A4B12, to discuss matters protected by attorney-client privilege, I move we go to that executive session.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
No.
Here we go.
No, no.
Does not pass unanimously.
I have to drive to Charleston at 6:00 a.m. I have to drive to Charleston at six AM.